You're watching CHCO TV's gavel to gavel coverage of the March 13, 2024, Special Council Meeting and Committee of the Whole Meeting for the Municipal District of St. Stephen. I'm Florence Mitchell. In today's Special Council Meeting, applications for financing to the New Brunswick Municipal Finance Corporation for a single axle aerial fire truck and a combined sewer separation and utility removal for a portion of Union Street will be discussed. In the Committee of the Whole Meeting, the Minimum Property Standards Committee will provide an update and Counselor Heislop will provide an update on behalf of the world's oldest basketball court. Committee will consider a request by the Rotary Club to install a coin funnel wishing well to collect donations. A draft amendment to Council Procedure Bylaw 05-2023 will be discussed and Committee will consider an offer of service by Dillon Consulting to construct a proposed border crossing welcome site on Milltown Boulevard. Committee will discuss RFP deliverables for a third-party financial services review. Finally, Mayor McHeekern will proclaim March 26, 2024 as Purple Day in the municipal district in an effort to raise awareness for epilepsy in Canada. Now let's join Committee in the Moosehead Room at the Garselin Civic Center in St. Stephen.
We're going to start off the Special Council Meeting. Make sure I got the right one. Yes. Called order. So before we begin, I would like to respectfully acknowledge that the people we are that we are gathered today on ancestral unceded territory of the Pashtun Makati peoples. I need a mover and secondor to approve the agenda for the March, Special Council Meeting of March 13, 2024 be approved. Mover, Counselor Harding, Counselor Eastman. Any question? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Okay. Any conflicts of interest this evening? Oh, sorry. I didn't look at you, Wade. I don't know if you said yea or nay, but anyway, sorry. I gotta make sure I look up. All right. No conflicts? Okay. Public. Okay. So, new business, request for decisions. Okay. So first off, we get a, the application for financing for the general fund, CS-063-2024. I need a mover and secondor. Are we, yes. Can I have a mover and secondor for the finance, general fund, CS-063-2024? Counselor Heislop? Counselor Otis? The proposed resolution resolved that the clerk and/or treasurer and/or mayor be authorized to issue and sell to the New Brunswick Municipal Finance Corporation and local government of St. Stephen, M Municipal District of, deventure, in the principal amount of $958,000 on such terms and conditions as are recommended by the New Brunswick Municipal Finance Corporation and be it resolved that the local government of St. Stephen agree to issue post-dated checks payable to the New Brunswick Municipal Finance Corporation as, and as and when they are requested in payment of principal and interest charges on the above deventure. Do I need to read that? That's just a, okay. All right. So we got the protective services, a single axle aerial fire truck, $876,000 on a 15-year term. Transportation services, Union Street, West Street, Two Boundary Street combined sewer, $82,000, 15-year term. Boundary Street combined sewer separation and utility renewal, $958,000. Oh, no, that's, that's the total. Yeah. Okay. Any questions? Is that a question, Wade? Yes? Go ahead. Or Counselor?
Just kind of wondering how these get divvied up. I mean, it makes perfect sense to me there. This was, you know, this was kind of an overdraft while we were doing projects to budget, so then we get the exact cost. So now we get a, you know, line line of finance, can we start paying, paying back? But I'm wondering, for instance, the fire truck I can see is protective services, a shared service. The, the road work and stuff like that, I would see that as not, not a shared service. So I'm just wondering where these would go on the budget when we actually put them in the budget for the 2025 budget and what line I usually would go on.
Tim? Tell us your, please.
Originally, originally when we went for, excuse me, financing for these projects, it was before amalgamation, of course. So at that time, it would have all been going to the town of St. Stephen. The Union Street project, I would think all the financing charges for that one would still go to the, the ward related to St. Stephen. As far as the fire truck, I was thinking about that while I was doing this and it might be something we might want to consider at budget time as to how that maybe should be allocated. Maybe it should be shared amongst the different, different wards because it's being shared by the other wards as well. Right now, the, the, the short-term interest on that fire truck that we've been paying has been simply going to the town of St. Stephen Ward and that's where the budget was for it in the 2024 budget with it. So I think it's something that needs to be considered at, at budget time as exactly where it's going to be allocated in 2025. Right now, as far as the interest, when we budgeted for 2024, we budgeted as if we had short-term interest for the full year of 2024. It was all allocated to the town of St. Stephen and that interest is simply going to be changed from short-term interest to long-term interest. And there may be some differences in the rates when you're going from one to the other. As far as the principal payment, which is a large amount, that doesn't show up until the 2025 budget. So I'll have to take a look at that when we do the 2025 budget and see how that should be allocated across.
Okay, Wade? Or, I was calling you Wade because you're on a screen. Counselor Greenlaw, sorry. So just, just a question for clarity. So when Counselor Greenlaw speaks, does, there's no mic having to be hit or anything? Like it, it comes in? We're all good? Okay. All right. Yes? Counselor Eastman?
What about the one for Oak Bay? I know that there was a fire truck in Oak Bay that was on a long-term loan as well, I think.
Yeah, that is a, was a lease agreement, actually, which we are, finally, the last payment of that lease is coming up quite quickly if it hasn't already been paid, if I remember Tim. But it's being shared based on, like all things fire are being shared. And as I expect, the aerial truck will as well when, when we sort out all the details. So yeah, that would be sitting in the Protective Services Department as a, right now it was a lease payment, so it was in a different spot. And then we'll have the last payment and we'll take over ownership shortly. It's that time. But yeah, that's, that's how we'll be handling that moving forward.
Our things are, okay. There we go. Okay. So no further questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you. All right. Next up, mover and secondor for the application for financing for the Water and Sewerage Fund, CS-064-2024. Counselor Harding? Deputy Mayor Wheaton? That the proposed resolution resolved, or the proposed resolution resolved that the clerk and/or treasurer and/or mayor be authorized to issue and sell the New Brunswick Municipal Finance Corporation, a local, of local government of St. Stephen, Municipal District of, deventure in the principal amount of $35,000 on such terms and conditions as are recommended by the New Brunswick Municipal Finance Corporation and be it resolved that the local government of St. Stephen, Municipal District of, agree to issue most post-dated checks payable to the New Brunswick Municipal Finance Corporation as, when they are requested in payment of principal and interest charges on the above deventure. So the environmental health services for Union Street, West Street to Boundary Street combined sewer, $35,000, 15-year term. Separation and utility renewal, that's all, it's $35,000. Okay. Any questions? Counselor Greenlaw?
Yeah, I'm just wondering there, on that, I'm wondering why funds were used in the, just more or less an explanation here. We use general capital funds to fund something that's really a part of the utility? Would it all come under the utility and the, and the capital for the utility?
Tim?
That's correct. There. That's correct, Counselor. This one is actually a, there's two resolutions here. The first one for $958,000 was simply for the general fund and the second one for the $35,000 is for the utility fund. And that $35,000 that we have for the utility fund plus the $82,000 is the total amount for the project that was split between those two funds. So that $35,000 is actually going to be expensed in the utility fund, the funded charges for that.
Any further questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. So there, that, that is the end of our Special Council Meeting. So can I have a mover and secondor for the proposed resolution that the meeting be adjourned at 6:10 PM? I'll take Counselor Heislop and Counselor Cornish at 6:00 PM. Any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Meeting closed. Thank you. All right. So now let's start our Municipal District of St. Stephen Committee of the Whole Meeting for Wednesday, March 13, 2024 at 6:11 PM. First off, before we begin, I would like to respectfully acknowledge that we gather today on ancestral unceded territory of the Pashtun Makati peoples. Need a mover and secondor for the agenda for the Committee of the Whole Meeting, March 13, 2024 be approved. Counselor Eastman? Counselor Heislop? Questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Any conflicts of interest? Seeing none. Need a mover and secondor, the minutes of the committee meeting, of the whole meeting held February 15, 2024 be approved as presented. Mover and secondor, please. Counselor Harding? Counselor Eastman? Questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you. All right. New business. We'll start off with the Minimum Property Standards Committee update. So I guess we'll leave that with, you want to open the floor for discussion on that or?
Your worship, so I'll, I'll look to yourself or my colleague.
Any discussion you want to be?
Well, I know I've got a couple of questions through email that I had not yet answered, so maybe I could take the time and just explain the document that I had put forward and, and try to answer the question that came as a result of it. So we, to try and start this committee off, I took some time and created the document that's attached in your report to kind of outline the, the different regulations and bylaws related to properties, I guess we'll say, and how they might impact minimum standards. So I'll just go through it quickly. New construction, of course, we have our zoning bylaw which, from which you get your development permits and that is handled by the Regional Service Commission. Upon receipt of a development permit, then you then, then apply for a building permit and that falls under the building bylaw and the National Building Code enforced by the building inspector. Depending on the type of occupancy, for instance, if it's commercial or apartment buildings, then, then technical inspections comes into play and that's the office of the Fire Marshal. For occupied properties, Fire Prevention Act, fire inspections, again, that's Fire Marshal's Office and Fire Department. When it comes to minimum property standards bylaws, this is a discretionary municipal bylaw. In other words, you may have it, but not shall have it. And that would be enforced by the building inspector and/or the bylaw enforcement officer. If there's health violations, that's the Department of Health and then if it gets to the point where it's a dangerous or unsightly premises, that's the building inspector. When it comes to vacant properties, typically those are dealt with under dangerous and unsightly premises. Now, the question I was asked is why wouldn't minimum property standards bylaws, if you have them, apply to vacant properties? And the answer is, they could. What I have recommended here is if we are going to go down the minimum standards, property standards bylaw route, most communities either adopt 80, well, they adopt 84, 86, which is a Province of New Brunswick regulation with respect to minimum property standards. Now in that, you have regulations with respect to living conditions and, and safety. And then you have sections that are more to do with the aesthetics or the, as I refer to it, the cosmetics, which would be, you know, lawns and paint and fences and things like that. So I, I had suggested at this time, in my opinion, based on capacity and the state of housing here in the community, that perhaps there might be some need for the, the living conditions and the life safety aspects to protect rentals, rental properties. That's typically what it's, what this is about, is rental property, so that if you're renting an apartment, you have certain rights. The, the cosmetic part of it, if, if you were in a community where you had a surplus of housing and, and everything, you know, was good, I would say absolutely, that's, that's crank up the standards and try and make these places look nice and neat and tidy. But in my opinion, that's not really where you are. Now, it's not my decision, but that is my advice. We've got people on the streets now. If we were to adopt this in full and go out and start enforcing some of these standards, what, you know, what will the end result be? Well, you know, rent may go up, there may be more rent evictions, maybe they might just say, I can't afford to bring this building up to standards and it becomes vacant. I don't know, I'm not an expert in that world, but from where I stand, that's a risk. So my recommendation was maybe not to go down the cosmetic route just yet and focus on what is required for life safety and dangerous situations. And that, in summary, is what this was all about. So that's my, my view on that.
Okay. Counselor Harding?
Well, thank you. Since I'm a member of this, along with Sean, I think that we should do this very slowly. If we're going to do it, we should bring it in maybe in stages, maybe something this year, maybe something next year, and by the end of two or three years, maybe have a workable agreement. I would like to start with the properties or with the, people that own properties, they're not on their properties, but their properties are a mess. And I could take you right now to three people or to three properties and they're a mess and I don't know, I think maybe that if the, I don't know who would do it, maybe we could contract it out to mow these properties and then send the bill to the owner. I don't know if that's workable or not. But like I say, I could take you right now to three properties that is a mess all year round and the people that own them are not doing their fair share. So, thank you.
Okay. Do you need any comment on that, Sean?
I did also, which I didn't talk about, I had also researched tall grass slash weed bylaws and I did find two in the Province of New Brunswick and they're similar sized community to ours. And basically they apply a regulation whereby between June and October, your grass and/or weeds shall not exceed eight inches. Okay? So based on that, you could effectively force them to mow their lawn a couple of times a year. You know, if, if you come out in June and it's eight inches, well, like everything, you have to give notification, give them an opportunity to mow it. If they don't, then you take action. And you take that action, let's say that gets that knocked down by July, maybe you go through it one more time and then you're, you're, you're out of the season. And for a few properties, that is maybe manageable, but if we went to the extent where we're going to say everybody has to have three-inch lawns all throughout town, you can imagine the amount of work that that would create and, and would be impossible in my, my opinion. So there is a possibility to look at something whereby we can, we can deal with lawns separate from life safety and dangerous premises if so desired.
So not just lawns, but what about debris or like stuff that's just sitting there?
Some of that, depending on the type of debris, is dealt with under dangerous and unsightly. Now that's very strict. What, what it can, it can't be kids' toys, it's, you know, car bodies, construction debris, things like that. The odd bag of garbage or whatever, it doesn't really deal with. And perhaps in minimum property standards, you can, you can deal with those type of things.
Jeff?
Yeah. So one of the reasons we wanted to come here with this is because before we expended more energy on the big minimum standards bylaw where we're talking about leaky gutters on a building, it goes back to something I said to Counselor Wright in the early days of this was, you know, what, what's the, what's the, what's the goal? What, we'll build you a tool to get to your goal, but if you're, if we need to get more clarity in what the goal is, if it's the, the aesthetics of the front, of the front yard of a, of a property, that, you know, we can look at, we can research and do some homework on how to do just that and not worry about whether the railing has got paint peeling on it or whatever, right? And so we got, we, we, right now, we've got a really wide scope on the minimum standards bylaw idea and we're trying to see, and as Counselor Harding's saying, is like, you know, maybe they take this in stages. So let's narrow the scope down and focus on the things that we want to address now. Because yeah, I mean, there's certain level of debris as, as Mr. Morton's saying about that to make it a fire hazard, to make it a dangerous unsightly property, that's under those legislations. Doesn't keep, doesn't prevent you from having a bylaw that says certain standards are, are not acceptable and will do it under the Local Governance Act and not under dangerous and unsightly. And I really wish the Province would change the name of that act, but anyway, we could focus more on the unsightly as a local community issue and deal with, you know, citations and fines and stuff under our bylaw powers and have different, a different process than the long, you know, three notices, six months to do this and six months to do that. We could look at building our own system that's more local, that we can deal with specific, more specific, a narrow scope, more specific items if we can get a sense from Council exactly what's in the scope that we want to look at in, call it phase one of a, of a community improvement plan or whatever you want to call it.
Okay. Sorry. Counselor Otis, sorry.
I have a question. Would this also be able to be applied to pest control if, for instance, what Counselor Harding's saying about if you have debris all over a property, we've, I know that a lot of citizens have reached out and just said they've had issues with sometimes vacant properties where there's just so much pest control needed, whether it's rats or mice or other animals and that's impacting their own properties, but they can't get a handle on their own situation of their property because it's so out of control on the neighboring property. So I know pest control is going to be more challenging for us, just every time it seems that we rip up the streets, we kind of run into more and more pests in this community and I'd love to see that be something that's prioritized is that, you know, from, from my own conversations with somebody who does pest control, he said that rats, for instance, if they find a place that they consider home, they will stay there long-term for years and years and they will seek garbage on other properties and bring it back to that property and remain there. So a lot of these vacant properties in town actually house a ton of pests and the neighboring property, properties are really impacted by that, but they can't obviously hire orcan for a property that they don't own. So I wondered if that could be considered as part of this or if that falls way outside the scope?
Your worship. I'd have to pull up my research from before. The previous town council, I'd actually done some research around pest control bylaws and some interesting approaches that, that some of my colleagues across the country have done. I can probably dust some of that stuff off if I can find it and, and again, if that is a goal alongside of aesthetics or whatever, like if that's the two points that we want in this new narrow focus, now we, now we can have more dedicated time to focus on those if that's, you know, if that's the sense that we're getting back from Council, those are, should be the priorities.
Counselor Heislop?
Just my own opinion and Mark, you're probably, or Counselor Harding, you're probably, I know what your, your kind of vision is too. It's the unkempt properties that have the, you know, the grass up around your waist and the refuse all over the front and everything. That's, I think that's what we're kind of targeting here. I mean, I, pest control, yeah, that's a very important, and I brought that up before because of the garbage boxes that we allow too, that have garbage in them and rats eat the garbage and they stay on, I know there's one, my dog's attack every night there, there's a garbage bin that I just have to slap my foot down and he jumps back three feet because there's, there's rats in it, right? And, you know, that's what's been going on, but I think that's the kind of thing we're looking at, like the visible unkempt properties that are just, you know, I don't know about paint and everything. It's so subjective, that topic though. It's just like somebody's, you know, tin things on the front is artwork and other people are like, no, it's not artwork, right? So, I mean, it's, it's very subjective and it's a really hard thing to pin down, but I think that's what we're kind of aiming at and that's what we've been doing over years, isn't it? Counselor Harding? I think that it's been, yeah, so.
Yes. I think if we could, you know, get with that, I think the, the rodents are very important to get rid of, but I think if we could do like one step at a time and do the long grass and do the, like Counselor Heislop said, there's properties that, you know, that you can't wade through, so. And I would say the majority of them probably are from owners out of town, I, I would think from far away. So anyway, there are other, there are other properties in this town that's a total disgrace, but they're not, have nothing to do with long grass or whatever, they're just, they're just a disgrace to look at. So, but I, I would like to, to start with the long grass and contact the people that own these properties. And like I say, if there has to be a fine, then there has to be a fine.
Yeah. Counselor Cornish?
Just a question, Jeff. Is this bylaw also pertaining to salvage yards?
Well, which bylaw? 84, 86? The? The one that I was referencing that most communities have adopted? No. Yes.
So yes, so, yeah, well, just one second. So my mind was thinking town-owned properties, but are we, we're talking the whole district here? I gotta get my mindset changed. I wonder, are we?
Realistically, it's up, it'll be up to Council. Cause you can have, and I, we had this debate at the Department Head meeting a couple of days ago, we can design a bylaw that has different rules in different areas, right? Cause rural living is different than urban living, right? And we have to keep that in mind as we look at the municipal district as a whole. What is acceptable in a, when you own, you know, three acres of land and have no neighbors might be a little bit differently than when you're on, in a, in an urban subdivision. So we can design a bylaw that says, you know, in, that applies to certain areas and has certain rules for certain areas, just like your zoning bylaw. Your zoning bylaw does a similar thing, right? Differentiates between uses and areas. So it is possible to do that and, and keep a sense, a rationality behind it, about what goes on on, in different areas of the community for sure.
Always still just thinking of the town and haven't quite amalgamated in my mind and when, when we're talking about housing, yeah. But, but it is a thing, but it's also, it's, we gotta, I agree, we gotta, it, there is a difference, right? In my opinion, not what Counsel feels, yeah. Counselor Greenlaw?
Yeah. So that was one of the questions I was going to ask, the difference between the rural and urban, so that's, that's good. The other thing is where we're looking at, we're, we're emptying vacant properties. One of my kind of concern about is that, you know, if you've got somebody like, there's vacant houses in, in Milltown. So you're going to ask somebody who's actually residing in the house to keep their lawn mowed and to do a bunch of different things like that. But if it's a vacant house, we're not going to, we, we can't apply the bylaw to it. Is it, is it, is that correct?
Well, I'm going to let Jeff answer that, but I don't believe so. Go ahead, Jeff.
No, in, in, in my scenario, there would be no difference between a house, a property that's occupied and not occupied. It would be, it means the standard or it doesn't meet the standard, whatever those standards are. Now, how quickly we might be able to get that remedied might be a little bit longer if it's unoccupied, right? Because it might take a couple of notices and, but we can build that into the bylaw. But, you know, you have a certain amount of time to rectify the situation because that's required as a matter of due diligence. If you're notified of an infraction, you have to give them a reasonable amount of time to respond. Now, it doesn't, shouldn't take five months to mow your front lawn, right? So that's not reasonable. So we would build it, but it might take a couple of notices to say, hey, if you don't do it, we're going to do it and charge you or whatever it is.
Thank you, wait, or councillor Greenlaw. So is, is, so is the fining mechanism the tool or can it be in, in the tax bill?
No, we would have to, we, it'd probably be a citation from the bylaw enforcement officer. But again, I, I, I don't want to sit here without having done the research and built the program and say this is the right tool for, for the job. But if we don't, you know, if you, as soon as you go into away from municipal fines, you're going to, the ability to enforce and the, and the time and the, and whatnot to get a, an offense under, under PAPA and stuff, the Provincial Offenses, Provincial Offenses Act, um, is different, right? It's harder to, to go that route. So we have to figure out, we as, and, and the committee, council and staff, where the balance is between the, the strength of the enforcement and the amount of resources we're willing to put behind chasing a, a seventy-five-dollar fine or whatever it happens to be, right? There's a balancing act there that has to be done, um, which will be done as we construct the program and, and the bylaw in and of itself, so.
So I think I know where we're trying to get to here, but I'm just, uh, throw this out there, just one sec, councillor Harding. The, I know we're talking about high to lawn. I mean, I, I think that is going to be difficult because that changes with what people expect when you start talking about protecting bees and all that sort of thing. I think that's where you went with that, Sean, when you went starting in June and whatever. I kind of get that. But can it be like not man, not, not maintained or not, uh, looked after? Sort of like not just a lawn, lawn, like it's just maybe just, uh, not, not up, up kept or like, like I, I don't know how you'd measure, like a measuring tool that way. Cause you could have, you could maybe have a manicure lawn lawn, like it would look great. Like, I don't know what that would be. Yeah, but anyway, maybe I'll hear something else tonight that might make, councillor Harding?
Well, I just, I just think if we could do one thing at a time, get the people who own these properties and who are not mowing their grass, if we could get the bylaw enforcement officer to, to give them a call and say, look, your property, your property has not been mowed for how long, you know, we haven't mowed it forever. Uh, we're asking you to, telling you or whatever to do this. And if not, if you don't want to do it or you're not going to do it, then there'll be a penalty attached. I mean, I don't see anything wrong with that.
We just need a tool to measure it and maybe you can work on something like that. Uh, councillor Otis?
Well, I know too, when I was talking to somebody previously, and I think you had alluded to it in the past, Jeff, too, where, um, I think it was in B.C. when they started to see that a rat problem, for instance, was getting out of control, they would actually just hire the company and send the person the bill. Now, I actually like councillor Harding's idea of just contracting it out, getting it mowed and sending the bill. But I feel like there's two sides to that. In one aspect, we know that it gets taken care of no matter what. On, on the other side, we're on the hook for that in some ways, right? So if they're not paying that bill, we're on the hook for that. But it is that challenge of, you know, if a, if a bylaw officer is continuing to return to the property and give fine after fine after fine, but they just, A, can't afford to deal with it, don't want to deal with it, how do we still get it dealt with so that it doesn't impact neighbors? And to me, it's not, everything is a non-issue to me unless it's really deeply impacting the neighbors. Like if there are rats running from another property or there's garbage everywhere all over the lawn or the lawn's out of control, that's when it's a concern for me. But everything else, I think, as long as the person is showing good intent, if they say, I really can't afford to get my lawn mowed, I can't afford a lawnmower, all those things, I'm good with that. So I also don't want the bylaw to be enforcing in a way that doesn't penalize people living in poverty who don't have the funds or resources to care for these things. And I don't know how to create a bylaw that's not subjective, subjectively doing that. I don't even know if it's possible to not be subjective in some ways. That's the only thing I'm a little stuck on.
Two things from your comment, councillor. Uh, one, um, everybody in this room knows that I, I, I love to, to learn from my colleagues across the country. The trick is when you're looking at what's going on in B.C. and stuff, they have a different municipal legislation than we do and they have different powers at the local level than we do. So you have to be careful in what environment they're doing things and whatnot and what authorities they have. But it is, it's a valid point. And the other thing is all I can say is anytime you draw a line, anywhere in, in the world, there's two sides to it. And there's always somebody that's just on the edge of the other side of the line than you would probably like them to be, right? And, and it's really hard to deal with that, right? And, but if we say, you know, if, if council says, ends up saying, you know, X, Y, Z is, is, it has to be, the grass can't be longer than six inches. The guy that's at six inches and a quarter but can't afford to have it mowed is still in violation. Unfortunately, that's just the way the, that the law has to work. Now, how, whether, whether council creates another sub-program to help in those, that, that would be up to council. And, and a whole nother discussion to get around. But if, from what I sense, just to allow us, the, the meeting to continue, without getting into trying to fix all the board's problems tonight, is realistically, we're looking at grass, front yard aesthetics type issues as the primary item. And if that's the primary item, then that's where we'll put the resources into doing our homework, talking to legal counsel, making sure that, you know, we have the powers where we need them to have, you know, need them to be and bringing back a document that's focused on that rather than, on that small scope, rather than that really wide scope, which is probably going to take us another two years to get through the, the legal review of and whatnot. So, which is, that's the conversation we came here to have tonight. So I, I consider that a lot of progress. And if, if I have that captured well, we'll take that as our takeaway and we'll go, we'll get to work on, on getting you a document that works.
Yeah, so that's, I like it was just brought up was, yes, uh, the, uh, it is, it is a concern when we get, we get approached. So we would just like, when, when, when we speak on behalf of a resident, uh, on the complaint side of things, that we have, our, our staff have the teeth to take action. And, and, and the, and the, and the manner that you were just discussing, once you can figure out the, a better, a good path. And councillor Heissler?
Yeah, just a thought before I forget it. I was just thinking like, there's a lot of vacant property here and probably some people can, those people that own those properties probably can afford to, to mow them. Some of them probably can't. But I think maybe in part of that, maybe just consider when you're, when you're looking at these bylaws is to have like maybe a contract from one of these people that own these, because some people own multiple vacant properties. If, if they just even had a, a contract with them, somebody to mow it three times a year, I think would, would go a long ways, right? Cause right now, they're just saying, well, we're not in the province, we can't mow it. But if you, there's, there's no excuse not to hire a contractor to go in three times in the year or a kid with a mower and at least have a signed thing saying, yeah, I, I am going to mow my lawn. Here's my contract with the, that might be a requirement by the, by the municipality to say, okay, if you're always seeing the same properties that are unkempt, to say, well, we want to see a contract with you, are you going to do your due diligence and mow this three times a year or four times a year or whatever we require? And just think about that when you're doing it, because it might be a way to get around some of those vacant properties that aren't being mowed because they're just out of the province, they don't care. They're in another spot. That's why you need teeth. And maybe that, the part of the bylaw would be say, we need to sign contract from a, somebody to mow it or something. Maybe that, that could be a, a solution somewhere along the line, I don't know.
Yeah, uh, so I think we're in a good direction here. The other thing, I, I don't want to create, uh, a system that people need to be asked to mow it every year. Like if somehow that would, uh, stop that, like, like to say that one person, you get them to mow it and then you gotta go ask them again in, in two or three months. Like it's not a, not a ask, it just sort of starts happening. Yeah, okay. I think they've got enough to put something together and see what we can come up with. Good luck, folks. All right, good discussion, folks. And it's a, and it's a, and it's needed, you know, it's, it's something that we do hear a lot about, so.
For the knowledge folks in the room, uh, fire chief Morton has another, uh, event he has to get to that we're hosting at our, not, not in, we're hosting, but as the host, he should probably be there. So he's gonna, he's gonna head off and, and take care of that business.
I booked this six months ago, so I gotta go.
Thanks, chief.
Uh, so next up, we got the conserve the court, uh, oldest court, oldest basketball court update, uh, the monthly update. If there is no, but councillor Heissler, you're here, so you have anything to share? Actually, you might not, you are here tonight, but, but you, no, no, but didn't you say?
I had a read on it.
Maybe you can share that as well.
Yeah, I'll share this. I actually got more of an update. And I think since this is the first, uh, time we're doing this, that, uh, I'll probably get a written report prior to the meeting. What's the best time? Be Wednesday before for the, yeah, Wednesday before the, our meeting. So I'll get Richard to send me a, a lot, but he did send me something along. And one of the ones that I wanted to share was that there's an invitation for council and any staff on, for March twenty-first to six P.M. They're, they invited the St. Stephen High School girls who won the provincial champions, double A champions. And, uh, they're going to, they're going to be at the court and it's going to be six P.M. They have something, they're going to watch the game, I guess, at the school afterwards. So it's just going to be a short half hour, forty-five minutes or whatever. So we're invited to that. There's, uh, they also invited the Fundy High Boys, who won the, the, the men's double A championships as well. They're working on a final date for that, so I'll, I'll update you as that comes in. Maritime Women's Basketball Association Tournament is coming to St. Stephen on April twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth. Might there be more details to follow on that. The Archie Celebrity Golf Tournament is set for August sixteenth and seventeenth. And, and there's going to be, uh, there's plans for bringing a reception dinner here to St. Stephen. Likely need the cooperation of the, uh, Garson Civic Center on that. But that'll, that'll, that'll come to follow. And there's a fundraising team meeting in Frehington with the Regional Development Corporation, March thirteenth. Trying to set up a meeting with the federal government representatives. This is the working group. The, the actual board only, uh, meets quarterly and the working groups got their feet on the ground almost daily, twenty-four, seven. And, uh, let's see, they're firming up final details with Sports New Brunswick to accept most of our phase two fundraising donations to relieve M.D.S.S. staff of that workload. So we're, we're, we're talking with, uh, Sports New Brunswick and they've agreed to take on some of the donations and, and write out charitable receipts to take some of the pressure off the finance department. So that's, that's, that's good news. Uh, and then they also wish to contract Lord Cultural Resources to update our business, update the business plan. And similar to the work with Cambridge Seven that we did with the, with the court, uh, with the concept development. And we, and they're looking for that cost maybe to be covered by the conserve the court, but that'll be conversations probably with Tim and, and Jeff later on. And, uh, they have also confirmed, uh, we've confirmed the participation with the Garson Civic Center and the M.D.S.S. with that recreation and home show. So they're going to set up a booth during that to go and give some awareness to the community. And that's the, uh, that's the update from, uh, from Richard. And I'll, like I said, I'll try to get this in prior to the meeting so you have something actually physically to look at rather than me, me going on. Uh, so that's it.
Are you open to, I don't know if there is any questions. Are you open to questions? Any questions or comments from council or staff?
Yeah, okay. Just for your awareness, um, staff have begun working on putting together the skeleton of a, um, operational agreement between ourselves and Canada First per their request at the council meeting to clean up some of the red tape issues and stuff that we've been encountering the last little while. Uh, it, it won't be exactly the same as, as, you know, they referred to the old agreement. We've learned a lot since we drafted the first one, so it won't be the same. Um, but we're going to try and, we are working actively since the last, over the last couple of days anyway, since I got back from vacation, um, to get a document together before, or at least a, a skeleton of a document together before we sit down with them to, to have a conversation there. So that is actively, um, underway right now. So that can be feedback from, to councillor Heissler to bring to the board too, is that we are, we haven't forgotten about them. We are working away at it.
Great. Okay. Thank you. So wishing well proposal. You guys all seen that? Or maybe we should probably share some details on that for the public?
Thank you, Mr. Matt. Um, yeah, as the, the report says, there is, the request came in, uh, a few months ago from just one community group, it was the Rotary Club. We appreciate the, the thought, they wanted to put in a, a wishing well or a fundraising coin apparatus. And, um, we had to think about it and, and we wanted to, to try and be fair to the community. Uh, and, and open this up. We said we'll bring it to committee of the whole, just to have a discussion if there's something that council would like to, to think about instead of having several of these, uh, pieces of equipment around the building in different spots, just having one and allocating one month of the, the busiest season between September and March, just to, to give that to, to one cause. And, and we can develop a, a policy for it. And, uh, and we can, you know, help shine some, some light, give the, the community groups some exposure. If there is, uh, you know, a social media and a website post we could do as well. Um, it just helps, uh, spread the, the, the campaigns amongst the community. And just, uh, thought we would bring this to, to committee of the whole for a discussion. So there's some pros and cons in there. Obviously, um, like you said, there's, there's access to, to, to more people in the building. It's a busy building. There is the concern with, you know, vandalism or theft, um, but with the cameras that we have, uh, we think we'll be able to find a, a good location. So I just wanted to bring that to, to committee of the whole today.
My only question, I mean, I, I think, like, I don't know how many people are requesting to do something like this, but I don't know. Like, I don't know, can we test the waters with this and just see how it plays out? And see if, if we're, people come forward and want to do more than we have to look at as a whole or? Cause that, you know, that, they're, they're, to me, they're, they're a good organization and they're doing lots for the community. And, and I, if it's what I think it is, the, the kids love it. You know, you get the coin and I think it rolls around and it's entertaining. But, but I, but I don't, I'd be concerned, like you're talking about the, uh, the possible theft and who's responsible and where it would sit. The camera's good, but all we see is a guy or a person taking it and running out the door sometimes. We don't know who that is. And, and how easy is that to move? You know, but I, I have those concerns, but, uh, yeah, I mean, I'll leave it at that until I hear some, maybe some other discussion on it, but, uh, yeah, deputy mayor?
Like, who would buy it? Like?
So that would be a, a purchase from ourselves, from the municipality. Um, I think the, the, the weight and the dimensions are, it's quite heavy that it couldn't be lifted just on their own. I don't think they're, they're silly expensive, you know? That's just the example. I'm sure there's different prices we could find. We can research this and we can develop a, a policy which we will bring to council in the next, five, six months in time for September, if, if this is the will of council to do this. Uh, and it, and it's open to any community group that, that wants to, you know, put their, their name in so that they are, everyone is getting a, a fair share rather than just, just one group. So that, that was the thinking behind it, so.
Councillor Otis?
Um, I would love to see this, just, I work in the nonprofit world and it's really complicated when you have so many different charity groups and so many different nonprofits. And it's just very hard to develop a policy in which you're only giving one person the month's fund. So I actually would prefer, and I think this is something that aligns with, our wishes for Garson Civic Center is improved accessibility for youth to our center to engage in sports and recreation. So I would prefer to, if we have this funnel, have, you know, if kids are predominantly using it and putting the money in and using it, maybe if they're coming at a hockey game or things like that, that the money actually goes in an M.D.S.S. fund for youth who maybe, um, struggle with poverty and can't afford to access services. Maybe it's just even we contract out to just jumpstart. Because I know that the Rotary Club is dedicated to community services, but they're also highly focused on youth. And then that just eliminates all of kind of the battle of all the different. And then that just eliminates all of, kind of, the battle of all the different organizations that have completely different mandates, like, we have a lot of different nonprofits with very different mandates. We even have church groups and other smaller community groups that may feel that they would benefit from the funding. So I prefer that if it were in our civic center, in the spirit of recreation, that it just directly, we just decide on one path, and then that path, like, Jumpstart's a great example, because they can take care of distributing the money to the children who apply for that program. And then it's just done, it's not a lot of work on staff, and it's just an easy way to move forward, and it prioritizes youth and community wellness.
I, I kinda get it, actually. I just don't wanna create a lot of work for you guys, you know, searching every month or every quarter. If it's, and most people that are coming through that door are sports orientated and using the facility, so if you could take what they're putting in it, because, you know, moms and dads are gonna be asked for coins so they can spin that baby around there, I can tell you, I've been there. And so, yeah, I, I can see what Council Rottis is saying there, so, but maybe you can build it and, and see what we can get, Councilor Harding?
Thank you. Well, I think since the Rotary Club has asked for this, that it should be surrounded around the Rotary Club. And not to tell them what to give to, they can give to whatever, if we approve this, that they can give to the charity of their choice or whatever. But since they asked for it, I would think that that would be, you know, a good thing. They do wonderful work, the Rotary Club, so I would think that we could, you know, we could do that this year from September to whatever for the Rotary Club and see how it works out. And if it works out fine, then maybe other people would like to join. Thank you, Worship.
I just was kinda reading through it again, and it was approached by Rotary Club volunteers in St. Stephen to ask if they could install their own charity coin funnel, so. So if it's their own, isn't it their funnel, so they're purchasing the funnel? So, should be their responsibility and their...
Yeah, under that scenario, yes, it would be, Councilor. Our concern was that we try very hard to make sure we're not doing preferential treatment to anybody. And so when Rotary gets to put theirs in, then Jumpstart shows up and says, hey, can we, can we put something in? And, you know, all of a sudden, we're having a hard, we have no criteria to say yes or no. We have no criteria, whereas if we own the asset, we, we make the rules. We, we can say, we can say, year one goes to Rotary, it was their idea, they get year one, whatever, as, as a... But we, we just didn't, we really are cognizant of not being, being preferential to anybody, even accidentally. So that, that's where the concept of maybe we should own it and have rules around how it works, as opposed to letting someone else put their asset inside our facility.
Yes, Councilor Rottis?
I know my time during Fredericton, when I was in Fredericton in school, I worked with the homelessness project there, and they had a tricky time downtown because they had kindness meters specifically for the homeless initiative. But what happened is, when the kindness meters went up, essentially you would put that money in instead of parking. But all of these other organizations wanted to have their own meters, and it became actually a very unkind situation of nonprofits fighting it out, homeless people actually trying to get into them to access some of that funding, and it just all went awry. So I am 1,000% confident, if we put this in, and it's the Rotary Clubs, and they're going to be able to keep the funds, it will open the door for my nonprofit and all the other nonprofits in community to also want one, I'd love one too, right? So we just need to be careful that we don't open up a can of worms. And the Rotary Club, like any club, does have mandates that they prioritize. So right away, they are biased to the things that they care about in community, right? You know, all, all of these different service clubs have different missions, so that's the concern. If you're approving, for instance, the Rotary Club, they, or like the IODEE, for example, they prioritize women and children. So all of these other service clubs, if it was an IODEE funnel, they wouldn't qualify under what the IODEE prioritizes. So I do think it's a little bit biased, and if we can lessen that bias by saying, you know, we could give the Rotary Club the funding that they could in turn use to potentially even purchase memberships for kids to be able to use our facility. I just think that that would be such an easy transaction for the town, like, this is how much money was raised, and this is how many memberships we can give out this year, especially for the pool, right? Because we don't charge in Milltown, but we do charge in here, so even just like little punch cards you can give kids would be really easy and accessible. I just, it creates a lot of bias, and it can wreak havoc on a community, and the well-being and the, the happy spirit can sometimes go awry if it's not managed well, or it's, it's biased in any way.
Yeah, nothing's easy here, you know, just stick the thing in there and see how she goes, is what I like to do, is just give them a shot, but anyway, Councilor Eastman, sorry.
Yeah, just to build on that, I've been involved in service clubs most of my life. And I'll tell you, a lot of mandates on service clubs, people don't understand, when you start digging into them, where the funds actually go. Like, I know the Rotary Club provides bicycles for Cambodia. So a lot of the Rotary Clubs in the areas all pool that money into one Ottawa right now, and Ottawa sends troops over, and they buy bikes, and they fix them over there in Cambodia. So you gotta watch how the service clubs operate and how, what they, what their funding is for. If you wanna stay local in community, that's the way to go, what's written down here.
Hearing lots of good points, and my mind's getting changed every time someone speaks. But, but like, like Councilor Harding was alluding to is, you know, it, it is their idea, and I don't like that thought of us, oh, let's put one in now, like, yeah, I just, anyway. I'm good either way, to be honest, but was there any other discussion? Deputy Mayor?
I agree with Councilor Harding, I mean, because it was the Rotary Club's idea. I mean, I, I don't think we can take it and just run away. And I do like the fact that it would go to different groups, like, I think people could apply. And I think most groups, if you take the groups from the community, they're going to have the communities, you know, the residents in the community in mind, so. So I, I think it's a good plan the way it is, so.
Yes, go ahead. Councilor Rottis, sorry.
The other thing in my experience that happens, and this is just speaking from nonprofit experience, when people throw a couple quarters in a machine, they end up not donating more to nonprofits because they say, well, I put a coin in that machine all the time. So I know in, in the nonprofit I work for, we tend to stay away from smaller scale funding, because what happens is people put a coin in all the time, and then, you know, if Sophia Recovery or any other nonprofit comes and approaches you, they say, well, every time I'm at the civic center, I throw a quarter in that thing, I've already done my fair share. So for a lot of nonprofits, it actually does a disservice when you do small things, because it gives people the impression they've already given big, and they're not willing to give anymore. I know it's complicated, but it actually does happen all the time. If you ask people for smaller scale donations regularly and consistently, they're not willing to write that larger check at the end of the year where they make a formal donation. So I personally adore the Rotary Club, I love everything that they do, I totally vibe with what they do. However, it is totally biased to put something in our Garson Civic Center that is only for one club, and I 100% guarantee it's gonna create issues for us as MDSS, because we're gonna have everyone coming out of the woodwork, wanting different kindness meters downtown or other ways to fundraise money. So the more clean, clean and clear cut it can be, the better, but I also don't wanna be responsible, like Kev said, for creating a policy and enforcing it and having residents be frustrated that we are prioritizing the Rotary Club.
I think I agree with Councilor Rottis on this one. And the other thing is, if, if someone's gonna put this much money out to get this much device, I'm not sure that if we broke it down into 12 groups that have it per year, or they're 24 groups, they have it over a two-year period, if there's advantage of collecting coins for a month. A year, yeah, month, 30 days, I don't think it's happening. I've been associated with this type of thing also, and I know they're a good group, they work that, but I almost think they should probably go a different way, because I was putting that in there, I don't think there's any money to be made, to be honest about it, if we're gonna split it down to 12 or 14 or 20 different groups altogether.
It's gonna be watered down.
Watered down, yeah. So you end up with $30 a month instead of $3,000 a year or whatever.
And I don't wanna put the burden on, on you folks to, you know, let's say there's $200 a coin, but you're spending $500 to maintain it. You know, if you start looking at the math, you know, you gotta get that coin out of there, you gotta count it and coin it and roll it and whatever you gotta do to it. I think if you can leave it in someone else's hands, or either, either just don't do it at all, I guess. It's kinda where I'm at. Like, it's just, it's, I don't wanna spend hundreds of dollars counting beans here, and then... Oh, sorry, I, maybe I got my little noise or something, I didn't see it there. Councilor Greenlaw?
Yeah, so this was the Rotary Club's idea, right? So it is like, I think Deputy Mayor Week said, like, you know, we're kinda stealing their idea if we decide to do this way. I think what we first have, after the thing that we decided we wanted to put one in and kind of controlling the stuff, go back to Rotary Club and say, listen, are you okay with that? Because we've kind of taken, taken their idea and run with it. They might wanna, wanna try to put it somewhere else in the community, right? Somewhere else that's not, you know, that, you know, wouldn't be necessarily an MDSS entity, so. At the very least, somebody's gonna go back to Rotary and have a conversation with them before we move forward with this, if we decide to do it that way.
Good point. We are, we are, yes. If, if we do what the group suggested here, yes, we're buying it. And that's what I mean, you're gonna invest whatever dollars in that, and then time and counting, and I think we should let the clubs do their own great service air for our communities, and just maybe have that discussion with them and see how they feel about it. I don't mind, I think that's a great idea. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And like I said, and I also agree, when you start splitting it up, you're, you're gonna split up, like, hold it, yeah, yeah, anyway. So we're, what do you need from us right now?
Unless you have a better sense than I do, I'm still stuck between, I mean, Councilor Eastman's not incorrect. The easiest solution here is say, we're not gonna, we're not gonna have these activities in this, inside the center. That's equal to everybody, no work for us, we just have to tell people, you know, listen, we're not putting those kinds, you know, we have vending machines in for, for purpose, but we're not putting anything in for anybody, and it's equal across the board that way. Like, that'd be the simplest solution. And I have no problem saying no, it, I mean, right? It's the most fair.
See the differences, you know, as we discussed, like, I can say, yeah, I can see that, I can see that, and then we're right back to, you know, and, and I agree with the, you know, the, well, I use the term watering it down, it would be, it wouldn't be worth, I mean, every little bit helps 100%, I don't wanna say that. I, I mean, let's just have the discussion with them, Kev, if that's you, and if there's some response that needs more further action, bring it back to us.
Well, I guess my question from my office is, is the conversation, no, we're not gonna entertain, we're not entertaining this, or some muddied version of, are you okay if we put in our own? I think we have, I think that we need that decision before we talk to anybody. Like...
So my thoughts are, 'cause I, I don't know about a lot of you folks, but I don't have coin. And I, you know, I use my debit card there. If you got, if you got me at the canteen and it was a buck 75, and you wanted me to round up for something, you got me. I'll go out the two bucks and give it, drop the quarter right there, and then that can go that way electric, chronically or whatever, but, yeah, you're, like, I'm not even gonna have a coin from somebody, so I don't know.
I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, because today I came out of the Canadian Tire store, and there's a gentleman there selling tickets for homeless or whatever it was purpose for, and you feel like, golly, all I got's plastic. Now, some people are starting to carry the machines, but generally speaking, if you go out, I know hockey or anything, you always got a dollar, two dollars in your pocket or whatever, you throw it in. I don't carry any money, they can have my card for a while if they want, but other than that, I think that's another point, because not, a lot of people can't change anymore, or even bills.
So this, how's everyone feeling here?
I say no.
Well, okay, there's your... Yeah, well...
So, an end is a good thing.
Does they come back and have some better idea or something to change their mind? Send something back to them, and then we'll discuss it. Okay. Draft amendment to council, procedure bylaw 05-2023.
So your worship, this demonstrates from earlier conversations we've had regarding a potential amendment to the procedural bylaw about the election of the deputy mayor. The last direction we had was a two-year term. My understanding at the time, although I know it was still under discussion, was to not worry about geographic location of that individual. So this, what's drafted here would, I think, achieve the goals that I had when I left the room last time. But it's here for another review before, before being brought to, being brought to council for first reading if it's deemed ready to go there. But these would be the, the new, the new language that being proposed.
Okay. Any discussion? Questions, comments? Okay, looks like you just need to polish it up and bring it back to us. Good job.
See you again in a couple weeks.
Most time we spent on that coin, sure.
How much, how much headache is this gonna cost you, Tim? If the deputy mayor changes after every two years?
I don't think it would be that big a deal, really, we would just change the rates in the computer. Oh, yes, 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 that's a good point. The signing authorities, signing, yeah, you're, you're right, counselor. That is a lot of work, changing signing authorities. And to be quite honest, it's easier when the, yeah, the same people for the, for the full term. I'm glad you raised that.
Well, I think that's kind of why we leaned towards two years even, but...
And that's a lot of paperwork for us to do, do that on an, on an annual basis.
It's a lot of work, you're dealing with two banks, and, and the banks are very slow. And, and plus as well, lots of times we have postdated checks for dementia payments and that sort of thing, and sometimes we have the deputy mayor sign off on the checks. But if the deputy mayor changes for some reason, then all of a sudden we have to do something with those checks. They're, they're, they, we have to get them back again and get them resigned by whoever is in place over that period that they'll actually be cashed. Or if it's annually. Yes, for the, sorry, yes, for, for, not yearly.
Don't change it the wrong way.
Not yearly. Yeah, for, for the full term, exactly, yes. I'm glad you brought that up. Goes for the, the full four-year term.
Yeah, the very beginning.
Next council meeting.
So I don't see any, I didn't see any one wanting to change it, okay? All right, thank you. Just forgive me, everyone, I gotta look up at the screen, and I got one counselor out there, so I gotta kinda, not, I'm not just staring at the moon there for the people on camera. Okay, he's, what's he doing again? All right, all right, next up. We got...
Completely new proposal, so don't feel like you're wasting any time on this conversation, because it's new. This is coming from some conversations that I've had with, with folks around this table and elsewhere regarding what should be the long-term use of the Gateway Park, which is the park across the street from the border, which currently has the covered bridge on it. So in an effort to, you know, see what, what it would take to do something different there, I had, I contacted Dylan Engineering to give me a quote for having their landscape architect take a look at the site. And our initial idea was we have the visitor information center that we have, it's in storage, that hasn't been constructed yet, and potentially putting it on that, removing the covered bridge and putting it on that site across, you know, at the, one of the main entries to town. So they were good enough to, we had a nice chat, Kev, and, and I had a chat with our friends at Dylan, and they were good enough to provide us this proposal to, to take a look at it, at least do some concept work for us. But, you know, we don't wanna expend funds if it's not something that you're interested in seeing, so it's here... you're interested in seeing. So it's here for dialogue, whether it's a good idea or not. We just, you know, we know, we're trying to make that park a little bit more active, a little bit more useful. And the, the original site, I believe, for the VIC building that we've got was going to be, I think, what the kiosk is now, right across here, mere across from, from GCC. My concern there, at least from an aesthetic point of view, is it's a much larger, it's a larger building, another visual block to the water and the green space. So I, my, it was my idea to actually shift, look at shifting that building down to the border as a possibility. But, yeah, it's here for just dialogue and conversation with this. Is something that committee is interested in? If it is, we would bring this proposal to council for consideration and approval.
So, yeah, so my first thought, I thought that's a great idea, because you got the, you know, we have this, we need to clean that up and update it anyways. And I think it's, I think it's the ideal to the point where people are crossing the border, because you know the border guards get asked lots of questions about tourism when they're going across. They can say, "Hey," they can point to it, right? But so, you know, but I'm just trying to visualize the congestion there, like, how much traffic's coming out and how much space you have. That would be my only concern. But I still love the idea, so...
One of the reasons we went the route of asking for a landscape architect to take a look at this, right? And because there's weird topography there to deal with. There's, right, it's a challenging site from many perspectives. But I don't, we don't in-house have the expertise to really do a good job envisioning that site, considering all these things. So I went to those who have that skill and said, "Give me a quote to do what you do professionally." And those are all things that we can bring to the, if we, if this project were to proceed, we could bring to the table. How many, how much parking is there off-street? There is a number of spots, parking spots along there on-street parking. So like, you know, what do we think the numbers would be? Would it be congested? Like, these are all things that people who have different expertise than I can handle much better, I think. So that's, I wanted to, the idea here is to get some concepts and say, "What would it cost for the infrastructure?" Because we do need to put washrooms there if it's gonna be our VIC area. It's part of our deal with the province. But, I mean, there is servicing in the area, so it shouldn't be too difficult, they don't think. But they'll give us some basic costing along things like that. And, and one of the things we talked about was making an accessible access from that site over to the Senataph, because we know it's challenging near the Senataph as far as accessibility goes, probably to say the least. So we, in our initial discussion, we said, "Well, we would really like to see it," because we own all that land there, you know, a nice smooth ramp or whatever, so that we could get people with mobility issues up there. So like, we've been thinking about a lot of different concepts here. It's just, you know, this expertise would be able to take all these ideas and hopefully put it into, we talked about two or three concepts would be created for, for consideration as a part of this project.
Yeah, so you, yeah, you mentioned accessibility. I mean, that's going up. So it will be challenging for the engineers to figure something out there. But like, did I hear correctly that the Senataph is not town property?
It's not. Well, actually it is. But we own, but we, but we own all the properties between the Gateway Park to it. We own all those properties. So we can have a long, smooth ramp that goes parallel to Milltown Boulevard as opposed to trying to go straight up, right? That's kind of our concept, a little meandering path with a, you know, you could put signs up, you could, around it and make it a, make it an active green space as opposed to it's kind of static and stale the way it is currently.
Thank you. That won't work. There's no parking. You're right, your worship. There's just no parking. And when people come through, they don't want to, and if you're going to park on the front street, there may be, there may be two or three spots, but I wouldn't suggest because there's a lot of businesses around there. And I would suggest, if you're going to do something like that, it should be done down here. I think down by the statue is one of the prettiest places. And I think that, okay, for example, if you get these big motorhomes, where in God's name are they gonna burn? You know? So I would suggest, if we're gonna do something like that, spend the money on it, that we do it in this location down here. Thank you, worship.
I think you're already there. Just go ahead.
I disagree with the motorhome thing because I think people will already recognize automatically there's just nowhere to park there. But I, I was downtown at the Fat Pie Shop this week. There was somebody there from Perry, Maine, who had driven forty-five minutes to go to Something's Brewing, another one from New York, and people who had driven down from Campabello just to bump around downtown. So I was really pleased to hear that. And I think that having a place across the border, when you first drive in, when you park on that street, if you're stopping to just look at that park or use the washrooms, you automatically will be hungry, for instance, if you've traveled a long period of time and you're gonna want to bump around the front street, which may naturally lead people farther down Milltown Boulevard to the waterfront. So I'm all about having a growth mindset, anything that changes the design of this community and improves that. And I think when we've talked about conceptual designs downtown and false frontages, for instance, and trying to make the downtown core look more appealing, this is, to me, the very first step, is welcome to St. Stephen. This is what we're known for. This is what we offer. And then building, like Counselor Harding said, anything in stages is great. So this could be stage one. And second stage, we could focus on drawing them down the street to the Garsleyn Civic Center area and the waterfront, et cetera. So I'm game. The only thing I would be concerned about is public washrooms have been a struggle for a lot of communities recently. That might be the only tricky thing to kind of manage, and I wouldn't want the town staff to have to constantly be down there managing that aspect. But I love the design and I'm really happy you went out and did this, Jeff, because it just speaks to your commitment to the strategic plan and, you know, having that growth mindset and looking into these things in a formal way. So I love it. I'm excited. It's great.
Yeah. And I think it's like, when I first glanced, I am excited. And the other thing that's always been an issue with our downtown is, is the businesses on that end of town, there's nothing to draw them there, and this, that'll help too. But then, but then I'm thinking of, there's been a few times I've been wanting to stop, I don't want to name a business, but the one, I'll say Fat Pie Shop. I wanted to get in there, I could not get in there, and I had to drive by and went home, and then I forgot to go back. So, so I, it's, it's gonna be a challenge, but I think it's a great idea. But it's just gonna be a challenge to make it work. Counselor Eastman?
I'd be interested in how much dynamite they're gonna use to offset that rock up there. No, honest, that's pretty rough ground. It can be done, and I agree. I think it's a perfect spot to have it, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be a challenge.
Can they do that action and then, and give us another option? Or is that, that quote would be just for that? Like, could it be this and then another, like, give us a couple visions or something to look at?
This is the business they're in. They'll give you, the quote will change, obviously, probably. But, I mean, if the intention, if council's committees' will is that we consider that site and we consider the, the green space in front of the GCC and have concepts for both, yeah, the price might, let's say, double, because it's two different sites and with the same work. But I have no, I mean, I think, I think we, we got into the VIC game out of necessity because GNB was pulling out and we didn't want that to happen. So we got into it and we've been sitting and sitting and sitting. So whether, we need to find a spot. If it's at the border, great. If it's in front of the GCC, great. There's pros and cons to both sites, there's no doubt. So concepts for both locations, I can get a new quote from Dylan and, and do that. But my worry is that we did it, we did it on spur of the moment to try and keep an element here, and it's not, has not been thought out and planned properly. And I don't want to just plunk a building that, yes, that tourism heritage gave us the funding to get and it's, it's in storage. I don't want to just plunk it somewhere because we have to. I want to, we need to have a vision. Otherwise, we're gonna not like where it was, and it's gonna get in front of way of something else. Like, we need to have a full vision. I think that's what I'm really trying to get at, whether it's one site, either say both sites. Let's come up with a vision that works for the community and that we think works for the community and run with that as opposed to just piecemeal it because, because we're reacting instead of, instead of being proactive in our thoughts.
And I don't, I don't know if that would be double when you're, because a lot of the pieces would be the same, it's just different locations. So, yeah, but it'd be more, obviously.
Quote, that's not a big deal. We'd have it before council, for sure.
Like the idea. Parking may be an issue. I don't know until we look at it, we won't know that, I guess. I know I was, in high school, I worked at the one that's now the pharmacy now, that was very busy, that was laundered up. And I know that we had it down here at one time, it was laundered up, but there was always kind of parking for that. And of course, they had their own parking lot up here. But they get very busy and with motorhomes and everything too. But, but it's better than, you know, they don't have anything now. So what's our, I'd like to know what our relationship and our, with the provincial government and what they can fund for us. And is there opportunities, because we haven't really done all this branding stuff that we're supposed to do too, that, are we getting financial help from the province for our own branding or like signage and everything? Because that was part of our, well, it was part of our strategic plan, but it was also part of the tourism plan too, about the, how bad it is when you're coming across the bridge and you got nothing there but this, you know, this shelter and with, you know, like, with a certain person's hockey name on it and a couple of things. There's nothing to say, "Wow, okay, we're Welcome to Canada." It's just, so I know that was part of it. So if that could be somehow incorporated in there, and I don't think all of that funding should be on our heads. It should be on the province and, and the federal government. The coming, people coming into Canada. It's just like, you know, like, come on, right? We're gonna have signage, we're gonna have, we're gonna have proper identity for our own community, which we, I don't know if we're promised that, but we should, should get it from the province.
Just, I do, I just want to say one thing here. Darn, there we go. I do believe too, you just touched on something. It's gonna be a, it's gonna be a marked destination on our GPS once you do this for, like, the, like a tourist information center. So it's gonna be getting more traffic than we think. But anyway, Counselor Cornish?
Yeah, the other thing is the holistic look at it. As Counselor Highsip was suggesting, in our strategic plan, we also talked about signage on the highway going to Maine and the highway, highway coming from Maine. I don't know what the ratio of traffic is. I know we get some across here. We used to get it all across here, but we have a lot of traffic that goes right straight through to PEI, and we have nothing along here other than it says St. Stephen. So we've got to, I think we've got to build on a holistic view here of whatever's incorporated on that wherever it is downtown. We also have a vacant information bureau out there in Brunswick that's not being used at all. And we have no signage to even tell people what's here other than Chocolate Town. So maybe it's a whole new image altogether, but we've got to get from all angles. We got them coming from eastern Canada. We got them coming from the United States. We've got them coming from western Canada. And we just don't have the one thing downtown. We have the main highway going across the whole front of it. So we gotta have a, a incorporated vision of what we're gonna have for standard outlook, what we're gonna advertise, how we're gonna do it and... We're all over the map, literally.
Another good point. That is one of the points that was brought up when I was talking with hotel developers, is that intersection out there meets all three border crossings meet at that one out there by the Irving and the Ultimaire section. We don't have property out there, right? Because it's not, as the tourist bureau, you do want it to act as a tool to bring people to your town that are bypassing us. Let's say that fifty percent are by, I don't know what it is. But if you grab them and they see the tourist bureau, you can get them there, get them here and service them that way and have room. But I think you're getting into a big cost, but I don't know where the...
We're, I mean, we're kind of running a little bit tangential to the, to the topic on the agenda. But, so I think, I guess, to bring it all kind of together, the question becomes, do we, I mean, one, is there any interest in rejuvenating Gateway Park, whether or not there's a VIC in it? Right? Because, because realistically, the proposal comes, has multiple concepts in it that included. One concept could be the VIC's there, one concept could be the VIC's not there, right? If, if the goal is to rejuvenate that park and, and have a plan, a professionally prepared plan for that area, we could have a concept where the VIC's there and what it looks like and what the challenges are. And another version that says, "VIC's not there. Here's how you can do a green space plan for it. Here's how you get your accessible ramp to the Senataph. Here's how you get, you know, your placards, your Welcome to Canada placard, your da-da-da-da." Like, this is how you set it up without the VIC there. And maybe how it encourages people to head to your VIC wherever you've established it, right? So that could be, we could look at tweaking the proposal, talked into the proposer here to say, "Okay, we want multiple concepts, but one with the VIC and one without, or two without, or whatever," just to, again, open up the, it's a conceptual plan. It's to give us ideas and give us a thought of how this could work. So, so I think that, that might be a good option, just to, for the value for dollars, that might give us a good look at both, both ideas.
Well, just one second. Counselor Eastman, you still want the floor? You're good? Oh, was it you? Oh, sorry. I had, sorry, there was one over there first. Counselor, I knew there was a hand over there. I just, earlier.
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to give you a bit of background about the, the structure that's on the site now. That was put up when Ambro was Minister of Health and a, many years ago. I would imagine now it's gonna be torn down, but anyway, that's how it started. And let's go back to the provincial government. Let's hope, if we do this, let's hope the provincial government chunks in some money, you know, because... Yeah, we're doing a surface for them. And when that was put up years ago, it was just as a, you know, as to show that we had covered bridges in New Brunswick, I believe. So, thank you, worship.
Okay, Counselor Cornish?
A million years ago, we had license plates here in town of St. Stephen on the bottom. St. Stephen was the gateway to Canada. And that was quite a drawing card, because this is the entrance to Canada on the east. There's also, if you look at tourism heading through here, we do have a lot of information, PEI, Newfoundland, Nova Scotia, whatever, St. John. But there's something that can be tied in there that when people do come to the gateway of Canada, they also get a holistic view of what eastern Canada's all about. The next stop you go is way up in Woodstock and way up further, but this was the gateway to Canada at this end of the world. A lot of people travel the, the two highways in there, number nine, and of course, along the main coast. And I met people last year from Texas that had a home, a mini home, and they came all the way from Texas and they drove the rural routes down through Campabello down this way. Then they got down here, they were in the restaurant, and they were saying, "What's, what's this thing with the river? I was here a couple of hours ago and there was water there. Now there's mud." Now, we were sitting at the pizza, pizza, and I explained to them about the water, how it goes up and down. I says, "Maybe you should stay for a few more hours and you can see..." Someone really pulls a plug on it. He says, "I can't believe that." So they were off to St. Andrews. But just drawing them there to stay for a few more hours? They may get, want to go down to the Five Kings and have a drink or something. But we do not sell ourselves. In the old days, yeah, we were the gateway to Canada, and it was sold. And the streets were lined up in both directions. You couldn't go anywhere. Now, they got another bypass. So we gotta figure out if we're gonna...
There, I'm done. Anyway, how about, I like what Jeff said, and I don't know if you guys support that, is, you know, give us a plan with it on there, show it, and then the walkway, because I think that's a good advantage, a good service to provide to our citizens as well for the Senataph. And... And so, and then at least get them in that direction, because we do gotta do something with the area. I think that's what kind of spurred this, the area and having the building. So, all right, Counselor Highsip?
How big is that building we have in storage?
Sixteen by fourteen.
It kind of looks like this.
Well, that would be, the washrooms would be extra to that building.
Pretty much.
Sorry, Counselor Greenlaw can't see it, but...
We have that now though, right? All right. Actually, it didn't go yet, so...
Last thing, if downtown wouldn't be the main VIC area, you could just have that as a Welcome to Downtown St. Stephen kind of promotion and then incorporate the BIA. Let them know what the Dylan Construction quote comes back for, for the work, and then they could actually be collaborative and go apply for funding to help promote that downtown core, because it does go clear up King Street, correct? So it, we could just be promoting that we're getting people to drive up, kind of that L shape up King Street and really like hit as many spots as possible. And because you've done the downtown plaza work already, I just think that will further, like, any opportunity we can take to draw people to stop for a minute and just experience any... people to stop for a minute, and just experience anything, they will naturally start shopping or eating or things like that, so, I know that the downtown businesses are, you know, struggling, and have expressed that they would love to have, and, and we need everyone to get on board, that parking may be an issue, but it's an issue that's well worth it in the end, if we can get more people to stop in the downtown core in the summertime and shop, so, lots of different funding.
So, can we at least get staff in a direction of, uh, so, where, okay, do we want the, the building on that property?
Yeah.
Can we put that, either forward or to rest?
I thought, I thought the... The idea of options.
Yeah.
Yeah, but why are you bothering with the option, because I don't want to waste their time, you know, or our money, because they're going to charge us money to look at, put that building on there, if, if there's no, uh, no, uh, support, then there's no point in even going, going there, right, so we might as well either, either end it or give it a boost and move forward and ask for both, or...
Not move forward and ask for both?
With, with the building?
Yeah.
Both. Deputy Mayor?
Both. Were they planning on putting that building there, is that, with the plan?
Yeah.
I mean, was that, is that part of, like, if they do a plan, they might not necessarily have that building there, right? If they do...
They have specs for that building.
Oh, so they do?
Yeah, they provided those during our, our initial discussion.
It's, it's a log home feel, but can it be painted?
Do whatever you want to.
Anyway, all right, our councillor Cornish?
I can't see too far from there, for sure, but I, I agree with councillor Lotus, Lotus on this one here, is that, to me, from here, that'd look like a fruit and vegetable stand, and, uh, I don't think that, I don't think that gives the image of the town at all, it looks like an outhouse, two of them, maybe that's all we're going to get out of it, I'm sorry, but that's just the way it looks like.
Don't want them wasting their time, if that's, that's, so let's just be honest and upfront, and...
Signage, more, I think signage, nice park area, and then drawing people up to the V I C, and using that log cabin to give to potentially a rural area where it fits in M D S S that could be used for a different...
councillor? Hyce?
And I don't know if you've, you've traveled through the states, and you stop at those little kiosks they have, that, you know, when they're closed, they have the washrooms there, and they have a little place to go in, and after seven o'clock, they have the pamphlets out in the front, where to stay, and your coupons to, I envision something like that if we're going to do it, and I didn't envision that cabin, it just reminded me of Beverly Hillbillies, that's what it reminded me of, to be honest, that's what the cabin looks like, it looks like a front porch on a, on a thing, right, it doesn't look like that'd be the proper area to have it when you cross the border, right, I think down by the river would be, it might be all right for out here, for rental of paddleboards and stuff like that overlooking the river, and, I mean, you can change the color, it doesn't have to be like that.
No.
Right, or, yeah.
I don't think going with that up there, I don't think that would be the right way to go for me, I mean...
Oh, yes, yes, man, okay, no, no, and what were you, deputy mayor?
You like the cabin?
But I, I'd like to see something there.
Yes, I agree.
You know, to me, we could have something that's really appealing, and like you said, they could hand out, they could have brochures and...
Just a thought, again, I think, this is, to me, is, is, is in two phases, one, we're
kind of a little bit of rushed to get the front street cleaned up a little bit, so we can get some traffic here, but the bottom line is, I can't stress it enough, coming from our strategic plan, we have got to have a plan as a magnet to draw them from all directions, whether they come across the Milltown Bridge, they come across Ferry Point Bridge, or they come across the new bridge, we've got to have at least signage saying, hey, look, there's no water in the river, people go to Moncton, they sit up there and they watch two feet of water rumble up the river, nothing is exciting as seeing 29 feet of water going up, because people don't realize that someone pulls the plug at the end of it, this, this is just, it's, it's the only place in the world that happens like this, but we're not publicizing it, but putting a fruit and vegetable stand somewhere, that doesn't cut it for me either, the bottom line is, we've got to have something that draws people here, that, and I think, maybe, it may be that simple, but if we had something downstream, a nice sign, wherever, it could be on the back of the building, it could be over there, whatever, we've got a building out there, they can drive up and look at it, they can park, there's parking up in that area, it's vacant, the province owns it, use it, but have a plan overall, not just for fruit and vegetable stand, sorry.
All right, it looks, it looks like to me that there's not enough support for the building, and, but we do want to clean it up.
Get rid of what's there.
Hmm, you know what we did tonight, is, we're, we're talking publicly, everyone's going to, we're going to hear, you're going to get your calls and emails, that's what this is all about, let's see what comes out of us, folks, that's what I say, and I don't know what, what kind of time you would have to...
Let the high school kids have a contest and see if it comes up the best idea.
Yeah, so, table it, until further discussion, or do we want to move forward with the cleaning it up phase?
Move forward with the cleaning it up.
Move forward, clean it up?
I think the building needs to go anyway, practically, it's in a not great state, so if that needs to be removed anyway, we might as well move forward with Dylan's first stages of cleaning that up, making it nice, just maybe not incorporating the actual building piece, maybe keeping that as an option even later on, if we decide to go that route, but I think it should just be cleaned up, and signage is really important, I think we, we are missing a big opportunity, because we are the welcome point to Canada, we have people coming through all the time, so, if we could have a nice park-ish area, maybe even washrooms, and signage with support from the federal and provincial government, I just think that would be a great start.
Oh, sorry, Wade, I'm not looking up there at all, go ahead, Wade, or councillor Greenlaw?
No, I, I agree for, for now, let's just get cleaned up, and I can bring this to the B I A, right, because the B I A may have some ideas, they may be able to help with funding for, for something else, so maybe not rush it, but I know the B I A has a real nice sign, with the early points downtown, that they've had difficulty trying to get placed on the highway, um, anyway, maybe that's a good place to put it down there, so, you know, I don't want to tangle it, I'd like to get the, the building cleaned up and under there, um, open to maybe spend a little bit of money to get some, some conceptual idea, the one could be, but, but I'd like a little time to discuss it with the B I A, um, be able to see what their ideas might be for it as well.
Okay, so just, uh, one more question on it, do we need a, a study done, or is, where we're not talking about a building, can, is staff capable of making something pretty, and we put the money into substance?
We got a great, um, culture and stuff.
Like, I'm sure we can hire a contractor, I, I just, I'm asking, like, if, I don't want to, or do you still want a study, or a engineer study?
It's up to you guys, realistically.
To live one that we have, and also get one done for down here, for across there, sorry, I don't know where I am, um, to see if we could, you know, do something down there.
Yeah, but I'm not going to get lost. Are you, okay, councillor Greenlaw?
Yeah, so I was, so I'm just saying, let's, let's hold off on, on Dylan, right, for a second, until I do get a chance to discuss this with the B I A, to see if there might be ways to fund that through, through them, or if they might be able to help out in some way, and, and if they can't, then we can, then we can move, move forward with it, um, so maybe we can at least hold off until the next council meeting, where we may consider moving ahead with Dylan, but, but I'd like to be able to discuss with them, at least to see, um, if there's a possibility of partnership there.
Sure. Can we push off the other tourism report, too, and take a look at that, and see what, see what the recommendations were in that, for, as far as signage, I don't know if there was anything specific, but we spent a lot of money on that, and it was some recommended...
Tourism plan?
And there was some recommendations in there, wasn't there councillor?
Yeah, we have a different...
We have a different, even look at the other original, it might be some ideas...
In there, anyway. Tourism wise coming, I know that, and it's, it's very, it's pretty, pretty nice, I can't, I can't share yet, but it's pretty nice, okay, so right now, it looks like we'll let our B I A rep, councillor Greenlaw, talk with the B I A, we'll let Jeff and his team discuss the outcome of tonight, and see if they can come up with something else, and get back to us. Yeah, that's what these meetings are for, folks, you know, okay, next up is Purple Day proclamation. Why did I just scratch that off? Oh, because I got ahead of myself, sorry, Financial Services Review, R F P deliverables. Is that something, let's see, where are they here? Use this tool that I got here. Okay, so we got, the committee provides administration with the feedback on the proposed R F P deliverables, uh, okay, so the treasurer and C E O have an, have on a number, yes, this, yeah, I'm not going to read all that.
So, um, two things, it connects two different meetings that happened, Mr. Tozer and I had been previously discussing, um, the benefits of a, of a third-party review of our financial practices, and after that, it came up at our strategic planning session as well, at looking at whether we can modernize and, and get more efficient in that area, um, so, as the cover report says, the way this is going to be the most valuable to us is if we can get it done early enough, that the recommendations can be ready before the budget, before we're getting the budget, which is why I'm kind of pushing, trying to jump the gun a little bit as far as our strategic planning session, because the sooner we get this out, the sooner it starts, the sooner we get results, um, councillor Greenlaw was good enough to send me an email the other day, with a suggestion, and it's, and it's a good one, um, that one of the deliverables could be, the third point could be adjusted to reflect that one of the other elements of this project would be an evaluation of external influences on the financial, financial services department, whether that's, you know, is, is, is the C E O's office or councillor, whoever being too demanding, is, has there been government reg changes that have in fact impacted, like, not only the, the behavior of the department internal to itself, but external factors that should be captured and, and analyzed, that was a good idea, um, I hadn't told him that yet, but I did, I did think it was a good idea, um, so I'm, I'm more than happy to, to work on some language before the, the release of the R F P, but at this stage, what I'm hoping to do is get a consensus from the committee that, that this is the basic structure of what the deliverables should be, um, once I have that, I can finish rounding out the rest of the R F P, which is, you know, how the proposal will be rated, and, and the scoring system, and the legalese that goes along with it, this is the really, really important part for you folks to really be involved in, is, you know, making sure that we're asking for the stuff that you want to know, and that you're willing to consider, um, so that's kind of why it came here, and then I'll take whatever feedback from today, and try and finish the, the entire R F P, so that it's ready for release in, in short order, assuming that councillor wishes to proceed with this project.
I mean, I'm thinking this is going to be an easy one, so, let's not spend a whole lot of time on this, and, and I'd like to just, yeah, make, like, all the outside things that can affect the in-house, too, I mean, which is day-to-day work that you guys are taking on every day, so I agree with that, councillor Cornish?
Uh, just for clarification, Jeff, at the strategic planning session, we talked about the actual accounting procedures, processes, systems, uh, basically looking at the whole thing, maybe throwing the whole thing out, maybe modernize it, so, is that basically what you're asking for there?
Hundred percent. Yep.
All right, we're going to make this short and sweet, then, everyone good?
One thing I would like to clear, um, for, for committee, and, and for Mr. Tozer as well, um, that, you, you see, the, the language that's used here is intentional, and a lot of times, the consultants in these projects will call the C E O, whichever office is organizing it, and, and ask the blunt question, are you looking to eliminate people, or are you looking to get more efficient in what you do, and my intention at this stage, I mean, I think everything's on the table, but I think my intention is, nowhere here is it with the, with the intention of reducing staff, reducing those costs, it's getting more efficient, and I wanted to be upfront with you about that, I wanted, I wanted Mr. Tozer to hear me say that, um, because that's, I know it's a concern, whenever we do one of these external reviews, is what's the end game here, and the end game, as far as the conversations that I've had with Mr. Tozer, is, let's get caught up, let's get things running, let's get rid of the bottlenecks, let's get rid of that stuff, and, and run this thing more efficiently, so, that's the goal, that's the, the recommendations I'm looking to get, and so I just wanted to be very upfront with, with everybody, that that was my intention.
I agree, and, and I think by making that better, that'll affect all the other departments around it, and the whole atmosphere for all of us, so, I, I, I'm ready to move forward and then, and, uh, have you guys move forward, Lawrence, I like, I look, oh, yes, councillor Lotus?
I also just appreciate the fact that Tim himself is open to this, because it's a big adjustment and change sometimes when you introduce new processes, so, it's great to have a staff that's team player and willing to kind of take this on, because there's always new technology coming out, and there's always new reviews, so, it's just awesome that you're willing to do that, and we're grateful for that.
All right, thanks so much, now... Where is it, though? What's that? Yeah, right there, there we go.
Purple proclamation statement.
All right, Purple Day Proclamation 2024, uh, so as you know, the municipality is, is, is taking part in this, and, and the group that asked us to do it is very happy with the town, and, you know, with the lighting, and, and we've added a little bit more to on the workforce, this is in the process, so thank you, Kev, for that, so, so we are behind it, so, whereas, Purple Day is a global effort dedicated but to promoting epilepsy awareness in countries around the world, and whereas epilepsy is one of the most common neurological conditions estimated to affect over 50 million people worldwide, and 42 people in Canada are diagnosed every day, and whereas one in 10 persons will have at least one seizure during his or her lifetime, and whereas the public is often unable to recognize common seizure types, or how people respond with the appropriate first aid, and whereas Purple Day will be celebrated on March 26 annually to increase the understanding, reduce the stigma, and improve the quality of life for people with epilepsy throughout the country and globally, now, therefore, I do hereby proclaim March 26, 2024, Purple Day, in effort to raise awareness of epilepsy in Canada, thank you very much, oh, we got two, like, two of them, I'm not going to read it at once, okay, so that, is that, so next resolution is, all right, well, yes, so, and most, I need to move our second to adjourn, please.
So moved.
So now we have the meeting at 7:47 P M.
Yeah, perfect.
Is now over, thank you.